Testing one, two. Good afternoon, the meeting of the Revere Planning Board will now come... Oh, jeez. Good evening, the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roll call, um, the salute to the flag.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Mr. Lemina. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. O'Brien. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First application on the agenda is continuation from July 26th, A 2323. Gregory Olson and Jane Black, 175 Rice Ave., requesting a special permit from the ZBA to alter and extend a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Gregory Olson and Mrs. Jane Black, and I'm joined here tonight by Mr. Olson and our architect, Mr. Bradley. We are here tonight to request a special permit for the modification of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family home at 175 Rice Ave. And the ZBA may grant this permit upon a showing that the modified structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Without turning this presentation into a legal dissertation, I have submitted a letter to the ZBA outlining the many ways in which the project meets this standard. Now, in short, the addition roughly corresponds to the footprint of the existing breezeway at the home. It is about 1,000 square feet, and it'll be shorter than the current home. And if I could offer a comparative analysis, other homes in this area, particularly along Rice Ave., are about 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. We roughly match this number as modified, as do the 157 Rice, 169 Rice, 197 Rice, and 45 Wadsworth properties. This matter was continued from July's meeting to accommodate a neighbor into complete view and shadow studies, which we have also submitted to the ZBA. And these studies showed, in terms of view, that views for the Wadsworth Ave. properties would not be blocked by the addition. And this is because, as I mentioned, the addition is in line with the home, is on the footprint of the breezeway, and is slightly shorter than the home. And the shadow study likewise showed that there will be no impact. It showed current and as proposed shadows, and these shadows were de minimis, and no shadow was going to be projected onto the 32 Wadsworth structure. Today, we believe neighbors will oppose this project as they believe that the home will be converted to a two-family home. This is not what we are proposing here tonight. My clients are a semi-retired couple who intend to make 175 Rice Ave. their permanent home. There have been questions regarding the family's commitment to living in the city. And while they may own other properties, including family properties, in the home where their daughter resides, they intend to live permanently in the city, to sell their former residence, which is located in Illinois. They unfortunately face delays, as Mrs. Black unfortunately suffers from some health problems and had to find a new care team in this area of the country, which she now has. And while they may not have lived in this neighborhood, as long as other families, Revere is their home, they enjoy the city and their neighbors. Mr. Olson is employed by MIT, and the family resides here full-time. What they intend to do with this project is pour money into the property and make it better. And though there may be some tonight that oppose this project, the project will not impact anyone, which we have the studies to prove, the project will allow the homeowners to live more comfortably in their home. Most critically, the project involves the installation of an elevator to accommodate Mrs. Black's health and mobility issues. And the current Ward Councillor for Ward Five, Councillor Powers, who struggles with his own mobility concerns, sympathizes with the family, and understands the need for this addition and the positive impact it will have on Mrs. Black's quality of life. And it is for these reasons that we respectfully request that the special permit is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in favor? State your name and address for the record.
Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio, 14 Proctor Ave. By way of background, the couple that owns this house and lives in it now, he's a professor at MIT. He moved out to Revere just recently because he loves the place. This is where he's gonna live and where he's gonna retire, where he currently lives. They're older individuals, and so they're retrofitting their house so that they can retire here and be here. That's the purpose. They're pouring hundreds of thousands of dollars to rehab the inside of this house, to live here, right? So this is in a situation where you've got some of these people that are buying, some of these individuals who are trying to rent rooms that we see in the city, where ISDs try to enforce out of that. This isn't a situation where people are overbuilding. This is a situation where someone's choosing our community to retire here, and they're putting money to upgrade their house because they wanna be on Revere Beach or Pointe des Pines Beach. They're upgrading the size of the house to what's already there. It's gonna be about 4,200 to 4,300 square feet. It's the same size roughly as all the other same, all the other homes along Rice Ave.
Counsel, I think your counterpart made that very clear. You're stating exactly what she said.
Well, I just, I just wanted to drive that point home, because I, you know...
This is the Board of Appeals meeting, so I'm gonna cut it short. I will not take dissertations or anything, stick to the facts, or I'll ask you to leave the microphone. Is there any other proponents in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, press the button, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, guys, hello, Mr. Tucker and the rest of the board. My name is Chris Clark, 32 Wadsworth Ave., Revere. I'm a lifelong POP resident. My home directly abuts Jane and Greg's house on the backside of the home. Our interactions with our neighbors have been pleasant. We have no issues with them. However, we cannot support this prospective addition. Our house has been in the family for over 65 years, and we plan to continue that and raise our little girl there. The potential addition would greatly affect our home as we know it. The previous owners did unlawful additions to the home. When they poured the new garage, they made the garage sit higher than it should have already been. Following that, the previous owners have proposed a similar addition Jane and Greg are proposing, and were denied. We're wondering what's different now. Adding the deck above the garage will entirely shadow our driveway and most of our backyard for a majority of the day. We also fear the addition will block the sun from reaching our solar panels, affecting our power generated, and increasing our electricity costs, something we try to be very cautious about. We know Revere is highly populated, and there is little privacy, but what we do have will be lost if this addition is approved. Our neighbors say they will put a six-foot wall around the deck of the addition for our privacy, but this will cause the shadowing to be even greater. What about the addition of an umbrella or a flagpole on the porch? In contrast, without this wall, they will sit directly across from our two-east-facing ocean-viewing windows, our favorite windows in the house. This would be a huge loss of our privacy, enjoyment pertaining to the location of our home. They already have a beautiful and spacious porch on the front of their home with nothing blocking their view of the ocean. Another porch just seems unnecessary. The property as it stands has a very small area of grass along the side of the house. The only other dirt is beneath the breezeway deck they have now. Due to the sheer size of the house and the raised garage and little area of earth to absorb rain, our driveway and basement regularly flood. We do what we can with the sub-pump, and all of our belongings are on pallets, but an increase in runoff due to the fill-in of this space could overpower our resources to prevent damage to our property. Our neighbor's home is one of the newest in the POP. It's massive. It's state-of-the-art. Our neighbors intend to add a fourth bedroom and an office to their pre-existing three-bedroom, four-bathroom home. To say the third bedroom of the home is not proper because it's in the basement is a stretch. The basement is fully finished, does not flood, and is complete with windows and a private entrance. It seems a bit excessive for two residents that split their time between this house and the other three houses that they own. The house in question is already double the square footage of our home with 3,400 square feet of existing space. We fear that having a five-bedroom, four-bathroom residence with a double-car garage right next to us will lead to being a multifamily home, maybe an apartment complex, or worse, an Airbnb when it is sold. Our street currently has 13 homes. We have 10 street spots. Being the last street in the pines, we not only have residents from Wadsworth, but also residents from Rice Ave. regularly parking on our street. We have major parking issues already, and I can only imagine how bad it would be if this home was instead filled with multiple more tenants. We feel strongly about this renovation is unnecessary, and we hope that the board sees us as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents? Kindly press the button and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Carolyn Hill, 35 Wadsworth Ave. in Revere. I've lived there for, oh my God, 50 years, and I think the house is big enough for anybody. For two people or three people living it, it is excessive. I understand the need for an elevator. I have one myself. It's a chairlift. It goes up the flight of stairs and takes me to the upper part of my house. I think that would be sufficient for her needs. They are lovely people, and I hated to have to come here and speak to you tonight, but I am really concerned about the size of this house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronald Clark, 98, Wouldnav.
Thank you.
I owned the house previously, selling it to my son. The concerns we have, when the previous owner had it, he was held to strict requirements to build, he tore the house down, he had to build on the same exact foundation that was there. We went through all these rules by the same board, all these conditions had to be met. He had a son, he wanted to put the son above the garage. That was refused by the same body numerous times. Hopefully, things haven't changed. I have a little concern, and I don't want it to sound inappropriate, but Mr. D'Ambrosio, representing the city and also coming presenting before the city, to me, seems like a conflict of interest. I want, I appreciate if this is taken on the merits and held to the same standards it previously was held, and things aren't different because of double standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Elaine Sinclair Fowler, and I live at 171 Rice Ave., right beside Greg and Jane's home, and I just enjoy their company so much, and they're just wonderful neighbors. My home was built in 1920, and it has been lived in by the Sinclair family for all of those years. Today, I spent about three hours calling City Hall to get some answers to questions, and I get passed on from one department to the next. So I'm not sure if this is the format to have this question answered, but every person, administrator that I talked to, said bring it to the zoning commission tonight and ask them. So I'll ask the question if that's appropriate, and then if you could let me know, or I can sit down if we're gonna discuss it or whatever. The neighbors are concerned for the future. And the question I had for the zoning board is, I think it would relieve many of the neighbors' feelings if we knew they have an addition planned, site planned. We've all, they've been gracious and showed us all the site plans, et cetera. But the question just came up over the weekend about, has that new addition been made that's planned? Would it, in the future, be sufficient to put another apartment in there? Now, I know Pointe des Pines is zoned for single-family homes, but if they decide in the future to go to make it another apartment, and they have to meet different criteria, if it's a bed and breakfast, if it was wanting to rent out the whole house and they have to rent it out for three months or six months, they have to meet different criteria. So my question is, and no one could answer this, is the plan that they currently have, without making any changes to it, be able to make it into another apartment?
Any other questions? Because that can be answered, but if you have anything else?
I share the concerns that the other neighbors have, and it's hard when you have a dream that you would like to do something, and you, and it's difficult to try to have everybody on the same page. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Before you answer that, is there any other opponents that wish to speak? Do we have, the only thing we have on file is for Counselor Powers saying that he's in favor? Yes. Okay. If this were to be voted on tonight, there would, under my recommendation, there would be, that this would be continued, that this cannot be turned, it has to remain a single family. That's without a doubt. That would be something that counsel and the owner would have to agree upon, but that is something that I won't vote without that, that it remains a single-family home, and that has to be a condition of approval of anything tonight.
We would accept that condition, thank you.
The owner and your counsel would accept that? Okay. So that answers that question. It would not change from a single-family home?
For one owner, for this one?
For anything. It remains a single-family home for infinity unless they were to come back and come in front of us for something else, or come in front of another board or council, but our condition would say that this remains a single-family home, period.
Living in the pines my whole life, do you know how many single rooms are being rented down the Pointe des Pines right now?
That's your board, you know, go to the deep, go to the city and tell them that. That has nothing to do with the Board of Appeals.
Right, but there's rooms everywhere. I got 15 of them on my street, which are all parking spots, you know?
Report them.
So, yeah, they get you somewhere. The, and just to make clear, I'm pretty sure, 99% sure, Mr. Powers was against the previous owner doing the extension on the garage. I'm like 99% sure.
That I don't know. I wasn't a part of the Board of Appeals way back when.
If Mr. Powers is in here to defend it, then it should be right off.
Well, Mr. Powers has stated that he's in favor of this.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, he was against it previously.
He may have changed his mind, I don't know, but that has nothing to do with us. Are there any members that wish to speak? No? What's the will of the members? If there, my vote would be that it cannot, it has to remain a single-family home. Did, there was a shadow study done that was requested. Did you receive the shadow study? I just wanna make sure that you've got a copy of the shadow study?
No.
The shadow study was sent to them. Thank you.
They're stating that it was sent. If you'd wanna look at it, but the shadow study did show that there's not, that there's no obstruction.
Yeah, I, like, you know, I have cameras on the house, I can show that they never came and delivered that. You know, if they have a date that they said it was delivered. You know, I know you guys said that you wanna keep it at a one-family, but, you know, after you guys approve it, there's nothing to stop it really from...
There is, they can't do it. If they do it, then it'd be in violation.
Well, what about, you know, the study doesn't include flagpoles, tents or anything on the top of the house now, increasing more of a shadow on us.
I could ask the attorney to get up and speak on that, but there's no question that it can't be, that if we put that, it will remain a single-family home.
Why do we have zoning? Every time somebody comes up and requests a change, we just change?
Well, it doesn't always happen, sir. You wanna speak, press the microphone, please.
This board is giving up half the pines, there's barely a blade of grass with everybody getting variances from one end of it to the other. I got a guy down the street that I don't even know if he got a place to shovel snow other than on the beach, because you got him right up to the street, right up to his side. You guys are just filling in every inch of the pines. We got that giant building, it's got big problems with that, they're gonna be there, I'm telling you right now. You know, you can't just give out zoning changes every time somebody comes up here, especially if it's this attorney, because I have a problem that there's a conflict of interest.
It's not always that attorney. That attorney means nothing to me.
Apparently, he's the right attorney to get, because whenever he seems to be here, that's when it works.
No, he gets denied here. He'll tell you that I deny him.
Let's do a comparison, how many?
Because I will be, and my attorney will be.
My name is Megan Clark, I'm ready to Chris, we live right next door. My biggest concern is the rainwater, is the flooding. There's really no grass there. They have a very small patch of grass. What is under their porch is the only thing that's absorbing any rain. Their garage comes up on a hill, so it instantly floods our entire driveway. Because our house was built on stilts and then filled in, we flood, and we're lucky that our pallets saved us most of the time. I'm nervous with more rain. It's not gonna work.
If I could just answer those concerns, we've consulted with an engineer, and we plan to have a flow-through foundation for the addition, which should allay any flooding concerns there. Thank you.
Does this go into conservation?
Yes, we believe so.
You still have to go to conservation?
Correct, due to the proximity to the ocean.
So that's the Conservation Commission, it does go to that?
Just one more question. Isn't zoning change is supposed to be due to hardship? Aren't they supposed to be based on a hardship?
Not all.
Not all?
Topography, land, just several things.
From what I'm told, most of them require some kind of hardship. I mean, we're not opposed to the elevator. If they wanna put an elevator in, we could work around that easily. But from what I'm told by some of the, some of the councils and stuff, it's based on hardships. And that's kinda my question, what is the hardship? What is the reason to allow something to change that's been enforced previously?
What, I'm not following what he's saying, because there was no enforcement that I know of before this.
Because he was, the previous owner was forced to keep the same foundation, the previous owner was not allowed to put an apartment on top of the garage, and now all of a sudden it's changed. What happened from the previous owner to this owner? I think it's the attorney.
There's not gonna be any apartment on top of the garage?
There's gonna be an office, which is another room. You're adding three rooms. For three people, it's already got how many rooms? And now you're adding three more by the time you're done, plus a deck. Now, the next thing you're gonna wanna enclose the deck, so now you got more blockage. You know, the next step is to enclose the deck. No, I'm just talking about the overall project, you know? Then you gotta take in mind the consideration of the neighbors. You got contractors coming in there now? How long's it gonna take? You got babies living next door? You've got the noise, the parking, where are all these contractors gonna park? We've got people parking all over the neighborhood for years now because of construction, and they're illegally parking, every day taking up all the spots. There's all kinds of ramifications when you guys approve of these things. You know, you gotta think about the big picture. It's gonna get sold at some point, or moved, or something.
You have a question.
Next thing you know, they're gonna be moving it.
And it will, and if it's voted on, it will remain a single family. The biggest concern was a two-family unit, and it's not gonna happen.
Would it help you if it was put into the, whatever we voted in, that it could never be turned into an Airbnb, knowing that the owners are gonna live there? I mean, is that something that...
I mean, it's not this guy, it's not Mr. Olson. It's what happens in the future.
We just asked you a question, sir. You're dancing around the question.
Would that make you feel better? Knowing that it can never be turned into an Airbnb? Because your concern is, is gonna be many bedrooms being put up there.
So guys, let me cut in, because this is my house, so I would, I feel like I could answer this better. No, it would make me feel better, but that's not the point. The point is, it's already so big, and what is to stop it from becoming an illegal apartment? And I get to go and, you know, complain, I don't know, you said we have to file a complaint if someone's an illegal apartment, and I gotta go through all of that, and I gotta bother Angela when she wins Ward Five.
That would be what the city inspectional service...
But, you know, if you guys were gonna approve it, I would want no Airbnb, no other apartment. I would want nothing on the, couldn't have anything on the deck, you know, increase in the shadow. I don't want it, you know, but they would have to be, you know, multiple things in the deed of the house to make me, you know, feel happier.
So you don't want any type of...
I told them, you know, I would, I have no problem with building an elevator, you know, I understand people get old. My mother had two hips, two knees, but, you know, she doesn't have an elevator, I wish I could afford her one. But, you know, I don't understand why you would have to add two bedrooms, a big, a second deck for an elevator. You know, I know Carolyn has a stair lift, Elaine has a stair lift.
I'm building a house right now.
Yeah.
I have five, I'm building a five-bedroom. There's only two of us in the house, but my grandchildren come over, my nieces and my nephews come over, and I like for them to have a place to sleep. I'm not renting any rooms.
They've been there for over two years, and their daughters visit a handful of times, and I've never seen grandchildren.
But that's their personal, you know, that's their personal issues or situations. I'm just saying, if they can't use it as an Airbnb, they can't in the future transform it into a two-family, that's all good for you.
I just don't understand what is stopping them from doing that. What if the zoning laws change and they can, and they can make it a two-family?
We just told you, and you keep talking about shadows.
Yeah, I'm not, they're talking more about shadows than me. I have my concerns about shadows. Yeah. Oh, I was just trying to, I wanted to answer that question over here.
Mike, is that something we can add on to? The Airbnb? Okay.
As far as conservation, this still has to go in front of conservation. That has nothing to do with us, but it still has to go in front of the Conservation Board. They still have to follow that process, nothing, nothing to do with the Board of Appeals, but they do have to take it in front of conservation.
I'd also like for it to say that there can't be an accessory apartment in there. I know two-family and accessory apartment are two different things, and that's the last thing I wanna see is them say they have an accessory apartment in there.
Single-family home, that's it. Could you read what we're gonna be, if there's a vote taken, what would be voted on?
In addition to the standard conditions, one, property shall be restricted to a single-family dwelling; two, short-term rental use shall be prohibited; three, accessory dwelling unit use shall be prohibited.
And then I'll stand the conditions. Is there a wish for the council to motion to approve with those standards? Please, please read them into the record.
The other standard conditions set forth by the ZBA are as follows: If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant, I'm sorry, of the special permit, the rights shall lapse. The special permit should not be valid until the appellant has recorded the special permit and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. And the appellant must receive a site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Would've been two votes to knock it out. You wouldn't need two votes to deny that weren't there. You would've needed two votes to deny this, they weren't there.
Next item on the agenda is special permit request, A 2325, Anira Amaya, 31 Bay Road, Revere, Mass., requesting a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to modify and extend an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by constructing a 10-foot by 34.4-foot addition at 31 Bay Road.
Please press the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Andrea Garcia, 150 Arnold Street, Revere, Mass. I'm here representing, well, the owner's here as well, but she prefers for me to explain the situation. So we're here to present an addition towards the left of the house with a dormer right over top. The issue here is that the owner, she, it's just a one-family bedroom, I mean, a one-family home, roughly about 500 square feet, and she has four kids, and it's her husband as well, so six people in a confined space. This addition and dormer will give them three extra bedrooms and a bathroom, and extend a little bit the living room to give their young daughter some place, some area to play in.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents? Anyone in... Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents, anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Ken Gongo, 18 Lawrence Road. I'm their neighbor. I'm right behind their house. They're a great family, four great kids, hard-working family, and they could definitely use more room.
So you're the abutter behind them?
I'm behind them, yes.
But you're not the direct abutter behind them, correct? I'm just trying to figure out where your house is compared to theirs.
On the side. Not directly behind them, but...
Were there pitches sent with this?
Yeah. I would say a quarter of the space behind them. I'll explain it.
Is the other direct abutter... Is the other person here that lives behind the house? No?
I don't know.
You're the only one?
I don't see it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Here you go.
Hi, my name is Monica Jemailovic. I'm owner. I'm a mother of four kids. We're living in a one-room, one-bedroom home. So my kids are with me. I have 15 years, 13 years, 12 and four. So we just try to make it a little bigger. I try many things to buy home to... But my uncle helped us to build a bigger house. So it's a little bit hard for us to buy home. We really don't have money to pay every month like $5,000.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Your neighbors to the left or to the right, they are not here? I don't see anybody. And this is Councilor Powers' ward? So the property next to them would be... This is very difficult to read. Where do you enter the home, on Seers Street or on Bay Road? Can you explain the layout of it, where the front door and stuff would be in this? The proposed addition is going towards the left of the property facing Bay Road.
Towards the left and up.
Okay.
On Bay Road.
And that's the... I'm trying to think of what house is there. Do we... There's no photographs. There's the empty lot. Seeing that this application didn't come with the photos like it's supposed to, and I don't have any information from the ward counselor, I would like to continue this till they can submit all of the proper information, unless someone... I mean, I looked at it. If you's satisfied with all pitches, I think we can vote on this. You are satisfied? Okay. So everybody did get a chance to look at it. Okay. Yeah, I did not get any calls from the ward counselor relating to this. So I would ask what's... What? I did do opponents. No opponents showed up. I did ask for opponents. There's no opponents in the audience. Okay, so there's a motion to approve with our standard...
The conditions would be as follows. If the rights authorized by this special permit are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant of the special permit, the rights shall lapse. The special permit should not be valid until the appellant has recorded the special permit and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit.
I just got one question. Has there any... Has there been any construction done there at all?
None.
No demo, nothing?
Nothing at all.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Same one, so that's why I asked that question. Okay. Roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the standard conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Please wait until you get written information from the city clerk's office, right? You sent out a notice? Do not do anything until you get written confirmation. Thank you.
Next application is for a time extension, A 2326, Basilio de Flumery, 439 Proctor Ave., requesting an additional six-month extension of the one-year exercise period from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on Lot B at 243 Malden Street.
Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neill, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicants, the de Flumery family of Revere. If you recall, this project involved the subdivision of the large lot located at 243 Malden Street and the construction of a two-family home on the new lot. And as a 243 Malden Street property is registered land, the subdivision requires Land Court approval. We are currently working towards that approval, and we request an extension of the variances to accommodate the last steps of the approval with the Land Court in the city. Thank you.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents? Is that... I believe that the ward counselor did state that he is in favor of this. That's my note. Richard approved that one. Richard said that one. Okay. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. I just want to read into the record. We requested the city solicitor to give us an opinion on rendering an opinion regarding a second... And we don't do them, but seeing that we have not received anything from the city solicitor in the time of this hearing as to whether or not applicants can request an additional six-month time extension, so as not to delay the existing project any further than we're already granted by the board, I propose that the ZBA grant the additional six-month extension at this time with the condition that no additional six-month time extension be approved again or for any other project going forward, which has always been our standard practice. We will put that in writing that we will no longer... We'll make that a ruling, that we will no longer do extensions beyond the first six-month extension. However, we're not getting the city solicitor to give us that opinion as of this time, so the motion is to grant the six-month extension with no other extensions going forward. I'd ask for a roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the six-month time extension for application A 2208? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the time extension has been granted. Next application is A 2327, Hamel Management Group, requesting an additional six-month extension of the one-year exercise period from the zoning board of appeals associated with the granted variances of A 2210 to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure on the property known and numbered as 470 Broadway and construct an addition to the adjacent Fernwood Professional Building at 454 Broadway.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neill, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Hamel Management Group. If you recall, this project entailed the construction in addition to the Fernwood Professional Building. And the applicant continues to face delays relating to utilities at the site. And we respectfully request an extension of the variances to allow this project to proceed to construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. This will be the same exact thing, that the city solicitor has not given the opinion. So I propose that the ZBA grant the additional six-month extension at this time with the conditions that no additional six-month time extension be approved, and again, that any project going forward, which has been our standard practice. I ask for a roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the six-month time extension? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. And Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the time extension has been granted. Next application is A 2328. The Neighborhood Developers for Garrish Ave., Chelsea, Mass., requesting multiple variances to enable the appellant to construct a 75,000-square-foot mixed-use building at 110 Ocean Avenue.
Chairman, would you like to see... Chairman, Attorney Jerry Dambrosio, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. Would you like to see the billboard on this, the facade on it?
Unless someone asks to see the plans, there's no need to do it. We've got them in front of us.
Very good. Well, thank you and good evening, gentlemen. Along with me tonight, on behalf of the petitioner, we have a full team that's here to address questions, if you have any. I'd also suggest to you that the full team is here because of the importance of this project. Not only for the developer and North Suffolk Community Services, but for the entire community, the importance of it. We have here the president and the CEO of North Suffolk Community Services, Mr. Damian Cabus. Mr. Cabus is here, I believe, sitting to my left. We also have here the president and CEO of the Neighborhood Developers, Mr. Rafael Maris. He is here somewhere, sitting to my right. We also have a complete team, design team as well as building team here. We have Director of Real Estate, Steve LaFriere, as well as potentially some of his people. We have Katie Cruz from Hancock Engineering. She's also here, I believe, if there's any questions. Again, we also have Brian Sanford from Mass Group Architects. We also have an associate from Mass Group. And I believe there may be one or two others from the team. Again, we brought everyone here because this is such an important project. As you know, the location is 110 Ocean Avenue. It is in the RC 2 district of Revere. Again, 110 Ocean Avenue, RC 2 district. It's important because the uses we're proposing here tonight are allowed as a matter of right. We're here before you for the traditional kinds of dimensional reliefs that are typically given. And by the way, typically given to the Ryder, which is right across the street, to 90 Ocean Avenue, which is immediately to the left, to the Surfside Lots, which is a little further down. But the zoning relief requests that are before you tonight are totally consistent with the other ones for all the past projects that are abutting it. It's important to note that the 110 Ocean Avenue is currently about a 16,000-square-foot lot. It currently situates a mental health facility, a group home, if you will, that is currently operated by North Suffolk Community Services. It's been there for quite a while. It'll continue to be there, whether this project is voted on or not. There was some confusion early on that this project was about the mental health facility. It is not. The mental health facility is there. It's staying there. The only question is, are we going to allow a larger footprint, a larger building above it, for 48 affordable housing units? The building that's being proposed, that's in your package, is a 75,000-square-foot building. It is seven stories. The first story will situate 25 parking spaces. The second story will situate the seven to nine beds that exist at the North Suffolk Mental Health. So they're moving up to the second floor. They're moving off to the street and going up to the second floor. And adjacent to them is going to be some office space that they're also going to be using. So that's on the second floor. The third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh are going to situate the affordable housing units. Gentlemen, of those 48 units, 30 are two-bedrooms, 12 are one-bedrooms, and six are three-bedrooms, okay? And it's important to note that all 48 are affordable in nature, okay? So when talking about the project and talking about the benefits of this project for the community, it's a double standard. We talk about the benefits and what's the hardship? What are we here for? Rather than getting into the hardship, I want to incorporate by reference an August 23rd, 2023 memorandum of law that we've drafted. It's in a letter form that's been submitted. That lays out the legal standard and the harms that justify the variances that we see. So rather than coming on those, I'm assuming that you've all read it, which I know you have. It's part of the record, and I incorporated it here with the benefits. You have an excellent non-for-profit developer here. The Neighborhood Developers is a nonprofit organization. This is not a builder or a developer that makes money on these projects. It's important to understand they do not make a profit. They develop projects like this in Revere, Everett, and Chelsea. The purpose is to provide affordable housing to our communities that are lacking it. They have a wonderful track record in the City of Revere. They've already built three buildings, 571 Revere Street, 525 Beach Street, and then the over 55 building at the corner of Beach Street and Broadway. It's important to understand that the Neighborhood Developers headquarters is right down the street. It's on Gary Street in Chelsea. Why that's important is that because they are nonprofit, they don't sell these projects. They've owned these buildings for years. They're here to stay. They are committed to our community. So if there's an issue with a tenant or a project, you pick up the phone and you call them. It is not some absentee developer from Chicago, or New York, or Florida, or California. They are right here in our backyards. It's important to remember that Neighborhood Developers not only builds, they hire people. There are people from Revere that work in these buildings and work for their company. They hire locally. It's also important to note that they conduct important community services in the City of Revere. They are not only employed, they provide employment training for people. They provide financial coaching for people and other types of services to help people get jobs, learn how to vote, learn how to community organize, learn how to be good American citizens. So they provide more than just housing. Another benefit of this project that came up in our community meetings in talking to the different neighbors is what kind of urban renewal will this project bring? It's important to note that you're going to get a brand-new seven-story structure that fits into the neighborhood now. Right next door, we have 90O. We have the Ryder in the front. These are all developments that didn't just come out of the blue. They were developed as a result of a city plan that was developed years ago, a master plan. So now, instead of having a little 4,000-square-foot home that's being used by the facility that's somewhat dated, you're going to be getting a brand-new facade, a brand-new building that's gorgeous. It's energy-efficient, environmentally-friendly. It's a sustainable new building. That mental health facility is moving to the second floor, so it's coming off the street and coming into the second floor. You're going to have sidewalk repairs. If anyone's walked down those sidewalks, you're going to note that a lot of the sidewalks, as you go up that end...
Okay, that's not part of the Board of Appeals, so let's get this going.
Sure, but it is part of the benefits, it's part of the legal standards, sir.
It's part of the benefits for the community, but stick to the Board of Appeals, because we've got a long night ahead of us.
So as far as the Board of Appeals, we have a CIT fund as well. The footbridge behind is going to be repaired as well. There's a footbridge that ties the school to TND, to the Ocean Ave. It's currently in disrepair. They're going to spend a lot of monies to repair that bridge so that it's going to be open for the community. The 48 units that are affordable, it's important to note what is affordable here. The standard in Massachusetts is 149,000. These are going to be done at 60% of that. So roughly, the people that can rent these units are going to be making anywhere between 40,000 to 60% of that, which is roughly 89,000. That's a rough range, okay? A rough range of people that can be renting. What does that mean in terms of... What does that mean in terms of actual rents? You're going to get $2,000 a month for the larger units, and that's an approximate number, and you're going to get approximately $1,000 per unit for the smaller units, okay? That is the affordable component of this project. These are not units that are going to be put out at zero. It's not the case. It's also important to note that, and this is maybe a point that is really important for the standard, I'm trying to go fast here, but there's so many good projects...
Cut you off, because you've got five minutes, so let's do it.
Sure. There's a 70% Revere preference here. 70% of the tenants will be from Revere. It's important to understand that. 70% of the people that will be occupying this building, a minimum, will already have lived in Revere. So that's what this affordable housing is for, and that's set by law, and that will happen. It's important to note that right now, the City of Revere is only at 7% for affordable housing. Under the current law, we need 10%. That means that a 40B development can come into the city and jam six or 700 units...
Jerry, let's cut this shot, please. There's no reason to go on for that stuff.
Absolutely, and I appreciate it. Now, I'll move it along. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think the final point is that we've reached out to the community. This project is supported by Councilor McKenna. It's supported by Councilor Ira Novoselsky. I think Councilor McKenna is here to speak on it. It's supported by the current acting mayor. It's also supported by Senator Edwards, okay? So strong political support for this project because it's important. This is an important project for Revere. It's an important project for this board because if a 40B development comes into the City of Revere, this board is going to have no impact on how to shape and mold that future building, whereas the Neighborhood Development has been working for months on this project, getting community input to try to get it developed in a way that fits the community and gets input from the ZBA, the mayor's office, and the neighbors. That said, I apologize if I've gone over. I've tried to really, I always do, and I apologize for that, and I hope I have all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, would the ward council like to get up and speak first? How are you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Joanne McKenna, Ward 11, Counselor. I'm in favor of this development because of the drastic need of the shortage of mental health facilities in the state and the lack of affordable housing in Revere. I had talked, I sat down with TND. I talked to them about more Revere residents getting on board with this housing because in the past, we've had a lottery, and not too many Revere residents got into housing in Revere. So I asked for more residents to get into housing, and they assured me they'd do the best they could. The other thing that I'd like to say is that underpass, the overpass going from Ocean Ave to Garfield School is deplorable, and we have kids walking there, and it's, I mean, for them to take mitigation money or CIT money to fix that is wonderful. The only question I have, can I ask a question to TND, Chairman?
You can ask a question.
Is there going to be lighting on the overpass? Because when the winter months come and the kids have to walk over that, which I didn't ask you, you know, I just want to, I don't want it to be dark. I want it to be, have some lighting on there, so that's, I'd like someone to answer that question for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll get to it after the proponents speak.
Good evening. Anthony D'Ambrosio, 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, former school committee member. Thank you. I speak enthusiastically in support of this project for three main reasons. The first is the clear need for affordable housing in the city right now. Now more than ever, with the inflation crisis and rents being driven up by about 75% since 2015, we need affordable housing for Revere families. The most appealing part of this project to me is the fact that 70% of the inhabitants are going to be prior in current Revere residents. You're not bringing a ton of other people in and increasing the traffic and congestion problem. You're creating, you're solving an issue for residents who are already here. That's massive to me. In addition to that, the affordable units, the 48 of them, are going to range from only 1,000 to about $2,000 per month, which is nothing short of incredible. The second reason is the Neighborhood Developers are an incredibly respected and just well-run organization. They have a strong track record of providing community augmentation through courses and programs that they offer to the community at large, and they've done this, as others have said, at several other points in the city as well, with great success. The last point I'm going to hit very quickly is the mental health point that Councilor McKenna hit incredibly well. Now more than ever, we need mental health resources and support for adults in this community. You know, I spoke a lot about mental health resources for children when I served on the school committee. The adult issue is always left out of the question as it's more pressing than ever now. Bolstered resources in that direction are only going to do wonders for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Yes, and everyone is laughing. How do you do? Jan Doob, Mr. Wallnut Avenue. I am also a member of the Affordable Housing Trustland Commission, a advocate and a proponent of this building. I have worked with the Neighborhood Developers for almost a decade now, and I find them to be a wonderful organization. They do stay involved with every property that they build. They bring people in before the development starts, and they leave people on the ground well after. They advocate for the community. I am myself a member of the organization. They left in Ward II, the Revere Community Committee, which will next month put on its 10th Annual Shirley Avenue Cultural Festival. So they will help not only improve the community that they are in, but provide desperately needed affordable housing. As was mentioned earlier, we are woefully short in Revere of affordable housing, so please, anything that the zoning board can do to help, thank you.
I'm happy to see you here this evening because I wanted to make sure someone was here from your organization. Thank you. Any other proponents? Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street, a surprise proponent for this development. I'd like to add, if I could, some stats about that 10% that everybody's been talking about. As of June, we are 717 units short of being at 10%. What that means is we need almost 700, I mean, after this goes in, you'll need close to 700 units to meet the requirement by the state. And why is this important for this board? Because if we don't meet it, you guys won't have much input as to where the buildings can go, where they can be built, and what the zoning... We can't enforce our zoning codes if we don't get to that 700 number. Also, the 48 units are going to offset 430 units that are currently built or currently going to be built. So we got a lot of units that are already coming in. We have units that have been built that we need to offset. There's a clear need for us, whether you want affordable housing or not, the city has to meet this requirement. I think this is a great spot for it. It's going to match the landscape of that part of the city, so I strongly am in favor of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Laura Christopher. I'm the TDI Fellow for Revere, so I work for a state agency called Mass. Development, and I'm speaking to you now as a lead organizer of a public-private partnership that includes the city and TND and is focused on economic development and neighborhood stabilization in and around the Shirley Ave neighborhood. One key tenet and goal of the partnership is to preserve affordability, to retain the family-friendly identity of the neighborhood, and specifically related to family size and scale of affordable housing and the need. While the primary function of my role is related to economic development, I can't have a conversation or start a new introduction with a business owner without hearing about the need for housing. It's present in people's minds, whether it relates to customers, their workers, themselves, and the affordable needs that go with that. That goes ditto for conversations about health and quality of life that we have. You could be having a food access conversation, and the issues of health and housing are tied together and top of mind. So I just wanted to echo back what I've been hearing from community engagement about the importance of this project and echo my support.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hi, my name is Guadalupe Parameno. I live at 130 Campbell Ave, and I'm also a board member of the Neighborhood Developers, but I'm here today as a lone resident of Revere. So, and I would like to chair today or my support to this project because I believe that this is a great opportunity for the city to follow the plan and add more affordable housing. And it's even more exciting to know that this project will have double impact in the community because it will address the two major crises that we have: access to mental health resources and affordable housing. I cannot imagine that families will go through to these two crises, not having a stable place to live and also, you know, dealing with mental health problems. So that's why I'm here today. I believe strong in the partnership that the TND and the North Suffolk Community Services will create this bigger impact in our community because this project will accommodate the current residents that are in 110 Ocean Ave, and also will create additional affordable homes for families. This site is ideal, as everyone has mentioned, it's close to the Garfield School, close to the T Station, to the bus routes. So it is great for people to come and live here, and I feel more even happy that hearing the percentage that other people have shared about, the percentage of families that live in Revere will go into the project. So I hope that for all of you knowing more about this project will make a great impact and also recognize the crisis that the city is going through, and also will help you to reflect that all the blessings that all of us have on having a stable home to live and also having our families, our loved ones, in good mental health. So I advocate so hard for this project to the city have more resources on mental health. And I will hope that everyone will vote in favor, and I appreciate the opportunity to chair my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing in here and not out close that side of the hearing. You do have some to read into the records?
Letters on file, and as a proponent, as follows: Jamie Farrell and Alex Garasev, 67 Pearl Ave, April Tate, 115 Oak Island Street, Fatu Adrame, 190 North Shore Road, the City of Revere Planning and Community Development Office, Laura Holmes, 243 Campbell Avenue, Viviana Catano, 178 Mountain Avenue, Bonnie Hoyt, 44 DeHone Street, and Senator Lydia Edwards.
Did I receive? Ira Novoselsky was one of them.
And Ira Novoselsky also sent an email in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak? There's no opponents. Is there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing in here and not out close that side of the hearing. No members wish to speak. I just had the one comment about it's not the footbridge you're fixing, it's the passageway going across. So which one is going on here? There's a wooden footbridge, and then you're talking about the overhead passageway?
So that we're clear, the funds are going to be deposited into the CIT, and then at that point, there'll be a collaborative effort on how those funds are spent, and the counselor will have a great say in how they're spent. My understanding is that it's about the footbridge going over, so that it'll connect, it'll connect the schools coming over. But again, it'll go through the CIT fund, the counselor, and there'll be a lot of community input. This project still needs to go through site plan review, so there'll be an ability to comment on it at that point. The Neighborhood Developers wants people involved, so the more input, the better in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's not the wooden footbridge, you're talking about the overpass that's above it? That was my question. So it's the overpass, not the wooden footbridge that's to the left of it? Okay. A motion to approve? Roll call.
Shall the zoning...
The only other stipulations I have that is, are standard stipulations, that there's no parking passes allowed, no residential passes, no visitors passes? Thank you.
The standard conditions of the ZBA are as follows: if the rights of this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere. Three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. And lastly, the property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere's residential and visitor on-street parking permit program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. Next application is A 2329, Nefta Realty Trust LLC, care of Ahmed Selman, 1176 North Shore Road, requesting multiple variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to construct an 11-story, 160-unit apartment building on the properties known and numbered as 6 Agawam Street and 1198 North Shore Road.
Could we ask for a three-minute recess just so... We are back in session. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni with Law Offices at 300 Broadway, Riviera, Massachusetts. This evening I represent NEFTA. NEFTA is a real estate trust that currently owns the existing property that we're looking at, which is 1176 North Shore Road. The trust and its trustee, Mr. Selman, who's here today, seeks variances as set forth by the Site Plan Review Committee's denial letter in order to construct a 10-story residential apartment complex. The locus is a, in the RC2 district, there are two pieces of property as part of the locus. One is 6 Agawam Street. It is a two-family home. And the other one is 1176 North Shore Road, which is a used car slash garage. These two properties constitute 21,612 square feet, which is below the requirement for the RC2 district, which is 25,000 square feet, and such a variance has been requested. The property and the project at hand before you tonight is a 10-story building. Nine stories will have apartments. One story will be parking in the lower level. There'll be 16 units per floor, 144 units altogether. There'll be two bedrooms on each floor. There'll be 10 one-bedrooms on each floor, and there will be four studios on each floor. The studios will range from 472 square feet to 568 square feet. The one-bedrooms will range from 583 square feet to 632 square feet. And the two bedrooms will range from 744 square feet to 758 square feet. Alto, there'll be 91 bedrooms, 36 studios, and 18 two-bedrooms. When we look at the variances selected to be adhered to in order to advance this project by the Site Plan Review Committee, they've established several variances. One is 1724010, which has to do with minimum lot size for the RC2 district. As I noted to you just a moment ago, the RC2 district requires 25,000 square feet and this lot is 21,612 square feet. As far as the next variance would be side yard setbacks, 1724010 talks about a side yard setback of 20 feet and will be proposing 12.4 feet. 172010 proposes, requires a 30-foot setback in the rear yard and we will propose 5.5 feet. 1723010, the floor area ratio requirement of no more than 3.0 will be providing 4.95. The final is the parking is 1728010. The parking requirement is both footnote C and E. The computation would come up to approximately 221 spaces. For one, there's 1.5 spaces for every one bedroom and studio. There's 1.75 spaces for every two-bedroom. We're proposing 36 spaces at this time. One of the reasons is this close proximity to the TOD district. I have Rick Salvo from Alliance Engineering with me. I wanted him to go and review the additions proposals, the elevations and so forth, and he'll also have some comments on the vicinity and how this situates next to the TOD and various other accessory public buildings and transits that this building is very, very close to. The Zoning Board of Appeals, I point out to you that paragraphs 12, 13, and 14 of the application address the hardship issue, which is essentially that the financial cost of construction in this area, given the existing wetlands in the area. So if I could, I'd like to bring Mr. Salvo on to talk.
If we can just go on with proponents and then if their questions come up about that, we could have them do a presentation on it?
I would respectfully request that at least the photos be seen by the board.
Now, you're showing the photos of the amended that you sent to us, correct?
Well, he's got more than that. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, he's got more than that. He's got pictures, overhead pictures.
No, I understand that, but it's going to pertain to what you've presented, what you've given us tonight.
It's not the same. They're different. They're site-specific. It shows where the site is versus, for example, and we'll try to be quick and lighten the fact that there are a few people.
I understand what you're saying. I misunderstood you at first.
No problem.
Because I thought those were the old things. These are the current site plans. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance. I'll be brief here because I'm pretty sure the plans that you have in front of them really speak for themselves. I think Larry went over all the dimensional criteria and the facts and figures of the lot. But just to orientate yourself, I think this is an important point to make. Our property is located in this area here, obviously at the intersection of North Shore Road and Agawam Street. It directly abuts on the transit-oriented district. It directly abuts the MBTA parking lot, which leads to the T Station. This is arguably, you know, the most transit-oriented development since the construction of 500 Ocean Ave, which, as you know, is right at the MBTA station. The existing condition, as everyone is aware, is occupied by, largely by a used car lot and a dwelling unit. The lot is very much developed. We're sticking within the development footprint that's already there. In the current condition, there's about 1,450 square feet of landscaping. By the recent middle of this building that we gave you, we shrunk the building down quite a bit. We're able to increase the landscaping by almost three times. It's about 4,200 square feet of landscaping, which is, I think, is consistent with the RC2 zoning district and the feedback we got from the site plan review where the intention was to try to create more green space around these buildings and not have a lot line to lot line situation as has happened in the RC1 district. I think beyond that, you can see it's a sort of irregular-shaped lot with two frontages for purposes of the variance calculations that Attorney Simeoni noted. Agawam Street is the front. The rear yard setback, which is the smallest, is directly against the MBTA parking lot. And then North Shore Road in this side would be some side yard setbacks. All the access will be via Agawam Street. We'll be closing the North Shore Road curb cut, which I think is also a big net benefit here, just to minimize the amount of curb cuts that we have on North Shore Road. But, you know, this is a classic example of lot shape, topography, and soil conditions with the adjacent wetland resource areas and the fact that this site is located within a floodplain. So I think with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Just for the edification of the public, what was on in the city clerk's office was the other plan. So the plan that's being presented to us tonight is the modification. So the request to have the more greenery is part of this plan that we show in front of us tonight.
Yes.
Okay. That just had to be made clear because that was a big issue.
Yeah, the area around the building, Mr. Chairman, hasn't changed since we amended the initial filing with the modification for 10 stories.
Okay. Okay, since it's a public hearing, though, we have to go on with proponents? And are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? If anyone wishes to speak in favor, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mark Armstrong, 40 Seer Street. I'm in favor of this. This is the revitalization of Riviera Beach, the area that we've been long waiting for. I've seen projects start, banks pull out, pylons go underground, they leave them. Everything starts growing. You know, it's good to see that everything's starting. I would like to see it continue.
Thank you. And you're 40 Seer Street?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Kiwichi from 461 Riviera Beach. I believe that this will improve, I'm pro this because I believe will improve our infrastructure, quality of life, quality of living. And I'd rather see a new building than see an all-car dealership, basically. And I'm pro this, so, you know. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mario Martinez and I'm the owner of 7 and 9 and 11 Agawam Street, which are the properties right across the street from the project. I'm in favor of the applicant because being a Realtor, I know the need that it is for housing. I also own another property one street over on 17 Calumet Street. I get calls every month from people who are basically in need of housing. They have to move out of the area and lean all the way Salem. They are going further up on the North Shore because they can't, they can't find any housing here in Riviera. So I believe this is a great project and an opportunity for more families to stay where they like it to be, which is the City of Riviera. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Victor Galle, 59 Fenley Street. I just feel that in this part of the city, it would definitely beautify that area rather than a used car lot and just a vacant space with the greenery that he opposes, you know, that he proposes with the structure. I think it would be, you know, definitely uplifting for the city in that area.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name is Abdullah Sayadi. I live in 4 Agawam Street. I support this project. I feel like we need more housings. Thank you.
4 Agawam?
4 Agawam.
Any other proponents?
My name is Mohammed Sadidin. I live at 6 Agawam and I think that this is a very good project. I believe that it's very feasible because it's walking distance to the train station and I'm a big fan of urban renewal as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lance Kelly, 59 Stark Ave, Wakefield, Mass. Former building inspector of Riviera and a friend of the developer and also I've worked with this gentleman on a couple other projects and he always does a nice job. And I feel that the, that this will be greatly improved, this area will be greatly improved with the building of this building. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Hello, my name is Ahmed and I actually live in 113 Oak Island. I'm currently looking for a two-bedroom and I'm really struggling to find something decent. But I really support this and I heard they were saying they're going to build more two-bedrooms and stuff. I really support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents? You can just bend that, nope, you, it's on. Just bend it down to your face so you can, there you go.
Hi, my name is Fatimah ZGHT. I'm like this project in Riviera. Thank you.
Okay, we need an address.
Hi, my name is Abdal Wahbit Al-Hajj. I live in 19 Argad Street. I'm business owner here in Riviera and I own real estate, Mallory Realty, in 3 Riviera Beach Parkway. I see this building this way will be better than having a parking lot, especially when at this green area, it will look better. And with the shortage with housing, I think this is what needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other proponents? Please line up so that we can get this going. If you're going to be speaking, just right in a row. I appreciate it.
Hello, everyone.
And then proponents? So state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Insaflagwell. I've lived in 139 Campbell Ave for the past 10 years. I always support new construction building because it does add more value to the city and gives the houses in Riviera more value in the market, so I definitely support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Kevin Welsh, 52 Geneva Street. I'm in favor of this project as one of the gateways coming into the city. It would be great to continue the beautification of that area leading to the beach. And the developer is a reputable businessman and he's local. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hadi Amalani. Hadi Amalani. I live 45 Riviera Beach Boulevard. I support this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing, not out close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board. Thank you. Lou McCarkus, 1133 North Shore Road, Unit 402. I come to you this evening on behalf of the 17 other condominium owners about 100 yards across the street who wanted to come to Riviera and have a vested interest in the city. We helped them with the support of the local counselor. What we had to do there, and it's very pertinent, the counselor suggested he was getting calls from the neighborhood, Agawam, Calumet, and people were concerned, he was concerned with parking when people came home at night. Well, what we did there was we had a four over three. We were proposing 24 units. We worked with him, the Economic Development Director, this administration, and we took a floor off. We went from a four over one to a three over one. We had 20 parking spots for 18 units and it was transit-oriented. So with respect to scope, 11 stories, I would just want the board to think about coming around Wonderland, heading out of the city. The last spot you're going to see is a 10- or 11-story tower next to the 711. The members that bought those units asked me about the plans. Apparently, a couple of them came down, looked downstairs for the plans, and the plans that they saw were the previous counselor's plans, which they, were not the same. So they didn't really have a time to look at the plans. They asked me if there was any kind of studies. Was there a traffic study? I said I didn't think so. Was there a light or shade study? I don't think so. Was there a community meeting like we had to do? I don't believe so. Well, Lou, is the architect going to be there to answer questions? Maybe. Is the architect here? I would ask the board members when they make this decision, please base it on your experience, your logic, your common sense. And I would suggest to you that the only hardship here, we have the petitioner asking for five variances, which he's entitled to do. The only hardship I see here is self-imposed and it's totally based on greed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else in opposition?
Angela Garino-Sawaya, candidate for council, and I live at 15 Bateman Ave. I'm coming to you with people that have contacted me saying, Angela, no more apartments. These aren't low-income apartments, so I don't understand. Everybody who's come up here to speak about it, I think, is under the understanding that these are low-income apartments. They are not. At first, it was an 11-story apartment building. Now, they said it was 10. 140 units went down to 144 units and they're still saying there's 1.5 parking spots per I'm going to tend to doubt that. We are going to be stuck with more traffic. We're at a gridlock right now. How much more traffic can this city take? How much more traffic can this city take? You wanna build condos, go right ahead, but as far as an apartment, we've had enough apartments in the city. We can't take anymore. And I would like to know what the process was to do some mitigation as well as, I don't know anything about having a community meeting and I've already experienced that with the building over in the Point of Pines, that they did, they hid everything behind COVID and now, again, what are they going to do? Hide this behind what? Not, not give the people a chance to really know exactly what's happening. Our infrastructure cannot take any more apartments. It really can't and it cannot take any more traffic. Thank you. I oppose it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Phil Consolo, real estate broker for thirty-eight years in Revere and I don't see, I can't get my. One sixty-nine Rice Ave. I go down that road every single day coming home from work and it takes me a half hour to get home to get through there. Now, you guys wanna throw up a hundred and forty-four units of apartments there. We'll never get home. There's gonna be piles there and only that fifty units, maybe, that's good. Going condos, owner occupancy, people have thrive to have their own, own place. They sell a house in Revere for five hundred thou, I mean, eight hundred thousand. They wanna stay in Revere, they wanna spend four fifty, five hundred. They can stay in Revere close to the train station. There's none of that going on. All apartments, twenty-two hundred? We need some condos. People need to live some, still stay and have ownership here and that's too many units, way too many units.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on our position?
Anthony Pozziale, fifty-one Arcadia Street, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm curious, I don't know if I'm within my rights to ask you guys this. Would you consider continuing this matter to the next meeting to give the chance for a community meeting? I'm not exactly sure who would set it up, if the ward counselor would or if their attorney would, but it seems like there's a little confusion between plans, what's being done, and I'd like to get some more community input to see how people feel about it. One other thing is I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the density of the development. It comes all the way back to the county ditch. I don't know if, if you can't continue it for a community meeting, maybe you guys could, I don't know if this is proper, but maybe you could get input from the Conservation Committee before you guys make a decision. I don't know if that's going out of order. I'm not saying I'm for or against the project. These are just some things I'm concerned about. The other thing is I'd really like to know a little bit more about getting EMS vehicles down there. Can, can the fire trucks fit down there? Can the police get down there? You know, is it safe for the public? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Okay. The ward counselor, Counselor Powers, did contact me today and he is in, he's opposed to this and his main concern was that they need to have a community meeting. So that was requested by the ward counselor. So that would have to be done between the attorney, the ward counselor, but John Powers did assure me that he would have a meeting as quickly as possible so that this can be resolved, the questions can be answered. There are questions on the plan, yes. In fact, that was brought up a few times, that the plan that we had on record was not the plan for the people that could look at it, so counsel, if you can speak on that, please do.
As far as, there was only one modification in the plan that was submitted to you by prior counsel and that was one additional floor, which was the eleventh floor. There was no other changes made to the, to the, to the plans. And as far as the particular units, the units are, they're rental units, they're apartments. They're not gonna be, you know, anywhere associated with anything of condo nature. The money for the condos drew up, has been drying up with lenders for years. So the only market we have is the current market, which is for prime and valuable rental for residents. We've, we've met all the requirements and I believe that we've even shown this board that we're TOD-oriented, so I think if this board can see its way clear, it would be probably better if we were successful at this board and then we would go to the Conservation Commission, because the Conservation Commission will address the, some of the issues raised relative to the creek and so forth. So I would ask that, you know, no disrespect to Counselor Powers, I've spoken to him, you know, he was looking for us to, you know, to ask for a continuance and we have not asked for a continuance, so.
In my time here, we've never went against the counselor to, for a continuance.
Let me just, I have to talk to my client.
That, that's, that's my, if, if this would've come in front of us tonight, it takes two votes to vote this down and I don't think that you'd have the votes, but I'm just speaking, that's my opinion. And with all due respect, Counselor Powers has been ill and he has respectfully requested to have it so that he can have a community meeting. He is getting a lot of calls on it with questions. I, I understand that a floor come off, so the, the count of units changed. He was, would like to discuss that with the developer. What's the will of the members?
I got a question. My feel for this whole project is I see a lot of the butters here that are in favor. I mean, I'm sure people that are opposed live quite a bit of distance away, you know? I'm more in favor for butters' concerns, you know, and the butters seem to approve this project, you know? They don't wanna see the, the lot there. I know the lot, you know, what it looks like, the seven-eleven. In my point of view, it's gonna clean up that area, if anything, you know? And people that live in Point of Pines and two or three miles away, I understand your concern about traffic, but traffic is a reality in this day in life. I mean, I live in Point of Pines and let me tell you, most of the traffic I see every morning, and I'm out of my house at seven AM, comes further from Lynn, Swanskett, Marblehead. That's where our traffic comes from. The same issue was brought upon when we were building Revere Beach with all the condos and apartments and let me tell you, I'm on that road every day and I don't see cars coming out of those buildings. I don't. Traffic starts from over the bridge in Lynn. That's where most of our traffic is coming from. And going home, the same exact thing. Most of the traffic going home at four or five in the afternoon, I'm there every day. Revere Beach is jammed going to Lynn, Swanskett, Gloucester, in that area. I don't see any traffic coming out of those buildings, which I'm impressed by because a lot of these buildings also have their buses that they take their people to the train station. There isn't a lot of, the cars are not coming from Revere. That's a reality.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I can point out is, is that all the immediate butters have either signed a letter or been here tonight. There really isn't a neighborhood per se that abuts that particular piece of property. It's been isolated for years. It's, the only thing of, of really significance there is it's, it's how it works in concert with one of the largest transportation, public transportation, public transportation stations that we have. Our clients at that building will walk out of their units, walk down the street and they'll be on their way to Boston. So again, I know that there's concerns about the butters, but I think you've seen the butters come up and tell you that they're for it and I would ask you to move for a vote.
I agree with you as far as this being the most popular building for trans-oriented development. No one can take that away from you. My only thing is to respect the wishes of the ward counselor. He's asking for a continuance. If it goes to roll call and it's, it gets denied, fine, but I respectfully request that that at least be brought up because he's asking for, he's asking for that. And he, he brought it up tonight again with his, saying he has several questions. I think he even called you.
I know he called.
Okay, so it's not coming from me. He's, he's asked for a continuance. My personal opinion is there's, it, it is a trans-oriented development site. There are questions with the wetland and I thought that they made changes so that there's more green space, but you're stating that that was on the original plan as well?
Right.
So it was probably the one before when they were negotiating or talking to Powers?
Yeah.
Because there is, that, that was one of the things that was addressed and I believe the engineer that's here can, can talk about that in the past. That's one of the things that you did do is add green space to this. Am I correct? Because I don't wanna make the wrong statement.
That is correct. The plan that was on file was that, and, and just to be clear, the Wetlands Protection Act specifically requires if you need a special permit of variance, you're supposed to get that before you file for a, for a noticement tag, so that's why we're going through this procedure.
And that was checked today, so that question was asked and it does have to come in front of us before it goes to conservation. That, I did find that out.
I have another question. The rear yard setback, that's facing the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Property would be Wonderland parking lot. The Wonderland parking lot.
So it would be here.
Because it's a park, they're just the shape of the land. So the side yard setback towards the creek would be towards Agawam Street there and then you got the front yard being not, where's the front yard on this? That would be Agawam, right?
The front yard would be Agawam Street.
Yes.
We have almost twenty feet there.
Okay. So the rear yard is the, the parking lot of the MBTA. What's the wish of the counsel?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve on the floor. It would be our standard conditions as far as the parking, that there'd be no parking that would be allowed, no permits, no requests from the city.
If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised with the one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned on the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. The appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit and this property shall not be eligible for participation in the city of Revere's residential and visitor on-street permit parking program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Okay.
Next application is A twenty-three thirty, Cavalo Corporation, seventy Victoria Street.
At recess so people can exit.
The reason why I'm getting this call is he can't get up and get out. No, it's not the case. He would put that out for how many months before he could get up on his feet to have a neighborhood meeting? I mean, you can't do that to the guy. You'd be leaving him out there for months. You know what I'm saying? You can't.
We'll resume in one minute. The mics are now active.
Application A twenty-three thirty, Cavalo Corporation, seventy Victoria Street, Somerville, Mass, requesting a six-month extension of the one-year exercise period from the zoning board of appeals associated with the granted variances of A twenty-two fourteen to enable the appellant to construct a two-family duplex dwelling on Lot seventeen True Street, Revere Mouse.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni with offices of three hundred Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I, I represent Cavalo Corporation, who was really permitting for two of his, of Mr. Cavalo's employees. This was a project that they wanted, that each of the two gentlemen that are here tonight would be actually building the first house that they've ever had. This, my two clients are Kevin Castanza and, and Jonathan Long. It's their hope to, to grant, that you grant the extension. The one extension is allowed under the statute. I showed, I gave a piece of the statute for you to look at. It says, provided, however, that the permit granting authority in its discretion and upon written application by the grantee, such rights may be extended for the time of the extension. These rights are not for more than six months. So that's what we're asking. This is our first extension. The reason why the installation, the gentleman tell me is that they've been working for Mr. Cavalo and he's first and so they're unfortunately second. But I think Mr. Cavalo, as I know him, has always been a really, really wonderful and great developer. I'm sure he'll, he'll get them going and I would ask you please to extend this particular variance so they can complete their project.
Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents. Seeing in here and not out, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents? Is there an opposition to this? Okay. I will read, we normally don't, is this a one extension?
First time.
So then I would just ask for a roll call to approve.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the six-month time extension for this variance? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the time extension has been granted. Next application is A twenty-three thirty-one, Steven Suda, two thirteen Grover Street, requesting a variance of section seventeen two four oh one oh, minimum side yard setback to enable the appellant to construct an addition and convert the single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Steve Suda, two thirteen Grover.
Steve Suda, 213 Grover Street, Rivier, Mass.
I think your application speaks for itself. Very well done.
Thank you.
So I will open this up as a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Sorino, Ward 6 Counselor. At the onset, please forgive my appearance. I genuinely did not think I was gonna be able to get here tonight, but seeing that your meeting went twice as long as our council meeting on Monday night, I was able to get here after work and whatnot. So I'm here tonight in strong support, strong enthusiastic support of this application of Mr. and Mrs. Suda. I say that I am enthusiastically in support because I wholeheartedly believe that this is exactly the type of project your honorable board should be considering and granting relief for. Speaking as both the ward counselor and as a 31-year-old lifelong Rivier resident, over the last couple of decades, this city has created a situation where many people in my age group, who I have grown up with, have been priced out of our beloved community. In this instance, Mr. Suda, whose wife has lived on Grover Street for her entire life, is seeking to add on to the family house in order that his in-laws can simultaneously grow old in their home, and Mr. Suda and his wife can live on the property and care for Mrs. Suda's parents while raising their own family in the same West Rivier neighborhood where Mrs. Suda herself grew up in. Mr. and Mrs. Suda are assuming ownership of the property from the current owners, Mr. and Mrs. Digitali, and I have complete confidence that this project will only enhance the neighborhood and not be detrimental to it, and for these reasons, I would ask that you approve this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, are there any one opposed? Anyone in opposition? Seeing in here and not out, close that side of the hearing. Is there a motion to approve with a roll call? Conditions, yes. It's not a party.
Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the relief requested subject to the following conditions? If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Rivier. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit.
Roll call.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
Roll call. The members, counselor, yeah, counselor. Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted, subject to those conditions.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
Just no further business?
No further business. The meeting will be called for September 27th at 5:00. Thank you.